It's gonna move it first. Okay, it's four o'clock, actually 4:01, so we're gonna call the December meeting to order. And the first business is pledge of allegiance. Uh, Ms. Carolyn Long?
If you please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, the mission statement tonight will be read by Ms. Alpha Booth.
The mission of the Beaufort County School Team is to enhance the quality of life in our community by nurturing all students and educating them to their fullest potential.
Thank you. Uh, any public comment? Anybody sign up for public comment? Okay, uh, we're making a quick change on the agenda. Is that about up and running? Everybody wants to hit F5 and... Oh, I'm sorry, you're almost there, okay. You're gonna move the next item down to where?
Not yet.
You're gonna move it to the end?
We can, yeah.
No, let's just move it. Just put it to the very end. That'll give us plenty of time. We have one item we need to move. Uh, so the, uh, let's see, discussion action 2.1, elections will be moved to the end of the meeting. So that'll carry us to the approval of the agenda with that notation that that item would be put at the end. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I move second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda was, is moved with the elections to the end. And that carries us to the board minutes. Hopefully you've had time to look over those that have been attached. And there are several. What's the pleasure of the board?
If there are no conflicts, I move approval of the minutes. That's the end.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on those. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes approved for the 30th and 23rd. And that carries us into character education award. And Ms. Nicole is going to handle that along with Mr. Bruce Holloman.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The character trait that was recognized in our schools for the month of December was gratitude. At the elementary level, the nominees were from Bath Elementary Gregory Perez, from Chaco Winity Middle Emily Beecham, from Chaco Winity Primary Lilian Davis, from Eastern Elementary Mateo Nieto, from John Cotton Taylor Jeanette Munoz, from John Small Jalen Lampkins, from Northeast Elementary Michael Blunt, from SW Snowden Sebastian Jones and Brianna Golding. And the winner from the, at the elementary level was Mateo Nieto. And if he will come forward. Mateo is, am I saying that right? Is a kindergartner at Eastern Elementary. His mother is Maria Nieto Ramirez, if she will stand.
She's not here, but I'll say her name.
Okay, okay. And he was presented by his teacher, Ms. Margretta Johnson, if she will stand as well. And she wrote, "Mateo is a well-mannered student. He comes in every morning with a smile on his face and ready to work. Mateo is very thankful for what he gets. On Fridays, the students are allowed to visit the treasure box if they have had a good week at school. One Friday, Mateo had picked out a pair of blue sunglasses and put them in his bookbag. When it was time for another friend to go to the treasure box, they got sad because there were not any more blue sunglasses left. Mateo gave the student his sunglasses and picked something else out of the treasure box. Mateo still had a smile on his face when he gave the other student the sunglasses and picked a new toy from the treasure box. Mateo sure does have an attitude of gratitude. We say congratulations to Mateo."
Mateo, on behalf of Beaufort County School Board, I'd like to congratulate you for showing your gratitude towards other students. I'd like to present you with this certificate. I'm gonna ask you if you would go around and shake the hands of all the board members, and then after that, I'll meet you a little outside the table.
Great job.
Congratulations.
Good job, young man.
Great job. Congratulations.
Got a smile too, hasn't he? He's a smiling thing.
He's happy.
Too cute. You're setting a good example for your little sister.
All right, now, I'm gonna let you pick a book from over here. And give you a pencil. So if you pick out one of these books over here. And now, I'm gonna let you write your name on here. And where do you wanna write your name? Right up here? Okay. Good job. Now, if you'll take your stuff and have a seat, and we're gonna call you back up for a picture in just a minute. Okay? You got all that?
At the middle school level, the nominees were from Bath Elementary Lilian Wallace, from Chaco Winity Middle Tatiana Gibbs, from Northeast Elementary School Antonio Brooks, from PS Jones Charice Hall, from SW Snowden Roderick Swindell. And the winner at the middle school level was Charice Hall, and she will come forward. And her parents, uh, Charice is an eighth grader at PS Jones Middle School. Her parents are Mr. and Mrs. Gregory and Andrea Hall. Are they present? If you will stand. And she was nominated by Mrs. Reeves, if she's present, if she will stand as well. Okay? And Mrs. Reeves wrote, "Charice is a positive role model for her fellow classmates. She is respectful, hardworking, and has a great sense of gratitude. Charice always uses her manners when receiving work, candy, or praise in class. She loves to come to school and see school as a great opportunity. She is also helpful to her classmates. She can spot a struggling student and then will ask to move to sit with them so that they can have help on an assignment. She will also take notes and include missing work for students who are absent. She then will help the students in understanding their missing work. All of this she does without being asked. She is appreciative of everything that she is learning. She shows gratitude to her classmates, teachers, and community. Through discussions about other parts of the world where education may not be as important, she is quick to remind the class that they are lucky because education is free and their school is a safe place. She is the first one to tell me good morning and ask if I've had a good weekend. She is a great friend to her classmates and a great student for her teachers. She is a joy to teach because she is so appreciative of everything that is given to her. She was deeply appreciative of the field trip to Beaufort Community College because she knew that this was an opportunity for her to see what all awaits her in her future." We say congratulations to Charice.
On behalf of Beaufort County Schools, I'd also like to congratulate you, if you would, board members. I'll meet you a little outside.
Yeah, if you could just pick out this from the bottom shelf. Swing the corner around and let you sign it too. You'll have a seat, call you back up in a minute.
At the high school level, the nominees were from Northside High School Zachary Woolard, from Washington High School Lorenza Cruz, and from Southside High School Runya Tucker. And the winner at the high school level was Zachary Woolard, if he will come forward. Zachary is a 12th grader at Northside High School. His parents are Mr. and Mrs. Larry Woolard, if they will stand. And he was presented by Ms. Kristen Van Zant, if she will stand as well. And she wrote, "I'm nominating Zach Woolard for the December character trait gratitude. Real thankfulness requires thought, energy, and more than just doing the right thing. Zach exemplifies real thankfulness and takes a proactive approach to showing gratitude by saying thank you and always using great manners. I was trying to think about specific examples I'd seen of Zach and gratitude, and I keep coming back to his smile. If you give Zach a friendly word, a suggestion in class, a joke in the hallway, or a compliment, he always responds with a beautiful smile that really makes the giver feel appreciated. The special thing is, then you feel even better and want to spread more smiles. Zach's gratitude ripples out, and I hope he realizes how wonderful he is. This week showed me a special example of how Zach shows his gratitude for what he has. Our school has a Toys for Tots collection jar in every room to help children in need this Christmas. As I was reminding students that today would be the last day and that we should help this wonderful cause, Zach quietly walked up to the jar and put all the money that he had in his wallet into it. Gratitude is always meaningful in and of itself to both the recipient and the giver. But in this way, I feel that Zach was, was a simple yet moving exempler, example for all of us who, on how to show our gratitude. For this reason, I am nominating Zach Woolard. We say congratulations."
Zach, on behalf of the board, I'd like to present this certificate to you and congratulate you for showing your gratitude towards others. And if you would go around and greet the board members, I'll meet you a little outside.
Thank you so much.
Continue the good wire.
I'm gonna give you this, thanks to Beaufort County School Show bag, flash drive, and we're gonna let you face the property.
Would you like to get off to your winners to come up? You gotta stand him on a block, we can get him up to them.
Smile. There you go.
Thank you, Nicole. Uh, at this time, I would like to invite Dr. Leon Holloman to join me at the podium for some special recognition.
Yes, I'm, and I'm gonna ask, because first we have a couple of things that we'd like to do.
Well, good evening. I'm delighted to be here in the beautiful Beaufort County, North Carolina. I bring you greetings from the seventeen school districts who comprise the northeast section of North Carolina. I serve presently as the Director of the Northeast Regional Education Service Alliance and have been doing that for the past ten years. Once upon a time, I was a school superintendent. And Don, it's amazing how I'm not nervous tonight. And this also is your first school board meeting I've attended since I've been here. So you know it took a lot to get me over here. But I, it is an honor to be here tonight. Each year, the superintendents of our region select one of their own to be nominated as the Superintendent of the Year. This honor goes without saying is the highest that we are able to offer because it is offered by your peers. It's people who know what you do every day and what you're doing for children in your region. Don has been with us five years, six years?
Almost six.
Soon to be six. And he is the second most senior member of the Superintendent's Alliance. Uh, we have one, one superintendent who's been in their district sixteen. It happened to be the one that replaced me. Uh, they finally got a good one, Don, they won't let her go. But we, we think that Don has just added a tremendous amount of leadership and calmness at times to, to our meetings. One of the things that Don has done is taken an active participative role in things going on at the state level. Uh, he is our go-to person if we need somebody to go to Raleigh. Uh, you know, everybody else, I think there's a TV show called Better Call Saul. In our case, Better Call Don. Uh, and we'll send him off to, to go work hard to try to get things done. But I won't take up all your evening, uh, because I think you've got some oysters you're trying to get to or something like that. But this says Dr. Don Phillips, 2015 to 2016, Region One Superintendent of the Year for the Northeast Regional Education Service Alliance. And it is presented by the Superintendent's Council of said alliance. So Don, we're very proud to have you represent us this year and think that you stand for all that's right for boys and girls.
You wanna get him to greet the board and sign it? As soon as, as soon as I get through it, we'll make him sign a little table over there. And actually, I don't have very much to add. I'm not head of the region, but I do serve as the Chairman of your local board. And we also would like to congratulate Don for all that he's accomplished as well as what he does for us. And it says, "The Beaufort County Board of Education would like to congratulate Dr. Don Phillips, 2015-16 Northeast Regional Superintendent of the Year in appreciation of your dedication and commitment to the students and staff of Beaufort County Schools." Could I, maybe it'll only take a minute. Could I get the board to join us for a picture with Don real quick?
Oh, sure.
Y'all take some of the board. I don't wanna be seen as a school board member. That's it.
But if you're gonna be seen, this is the board.
This is the board that is seen.
Did y'all not get the memo?
I didn't get the, I didn't get the red memo.
Margretta, God.
Thank you all very much. So is that the end of the recognition?
Yeah.
Let's see. Okay, yes, that, that ends the recognition portion of our meeting. We usually pause just briefly to allow you, those that came for just that part, before we enter into our business. You're welcome to stay for the entire meeting. It really gets interesting from here on out. But if you don't want to, now's a good time.
Thank you for coming.
You can do whatever you'd like.
I didn't know that. You did a good job with him.
This is your parents? You should have introduced them all to us.
I didn't know that.
I wanna make your dad come and shake the hands of the board.
Like, we need a picture.
I didn't even know that. Yeah, why don't you get one with your parents? I didn't even, okay, I didn't even know they were here.
Will Sarah gonna be able to meet your parents?
We'll make, we'll make a guy. No, I didn't know who's parents. He said he didn't know.
What a nice man.
That was nice.
That was. And I'm sure Dr. Holloman was begging over because they've had him here in the room over here. Okay, I think, um, everybody that's going to leave has left the building. We're all good at clearing the room out.
You know how to clean out a room.
Uh, so, we're gonna move into the discussion. No action? Okay. And first up is an audit presentation.
Kind of slide this over so I can address you. I don't, I don't think I'm as cute as Mateo, so...
I don't think there are a lot of people that are fitter than him.
Yeah, hopefully you guys will find the meeting interesting. Um, this year, we're gonna do things just a little bit different. I know going through an actual audit report is kind of a bear. It's tough to keep up with, so we've got some slides today. I don't know if everybody can see or wants to, to readjust real fast.
Are these different from what we have on our computer, do you think?
They should not be, no.
Okay, we'll follow you right here.
My name is Lance Craig. I'm a manager with Dixon Hughes Goodman in the Pinehurst office. I've been on this engagement for about four years now. Um, I wanna start out by thanking Lynn and her team. They really helped us out through this process this year. Everything went very smoothly, especially in a year with transition with Steve leaving. So Lynn, thank you very much. Today, we're gonna talk about four things. The results of the audit and the audit procedures, our letter to the board, some financial highlights, and then our actual compliance audit. So if I could start out, we performed the audit of the financial statements, which includes the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining funds for Beaufort County Schools. Through our procedures, we were able to determine that the financial statements were presented fairly in all material respects, meaning we are not aware of any material modification which should be made to the financial statements as of June 30, 2015. I do wanna point out that this year, we issued a restatement to the financial statements due to the adoption of a new accounting principle. That accounting principle is GASB Statement Number 68. This is a new standard which is applicable to all governmental units across the United States of America, which forces local government units to recognize their proportionate share of the, uh, their share of the state pension in which they participate in. We'll touch, um, a bit on the impact of the financial statements that this had a little bit later in the presentation. Moving to the letter of the board, that should be the, the loose leaflet that you guys have in your packet. I just wanna point out a few things in that letter. This letter summarizes various aspects of our audit, such as our responsibilities under audit standards and O and B circular A133, which governs the single audit compliance standards. It also discloses any significant estimates and sensitive disclosures in the financial statements, which we've identified as being the useful lives of depreciable assets and your proportionate share of the net pension liability for the teacher and state employees' retirement system plan. It also discloses any difficulties or disagreements with management, of which there were none, and any uncorrected misstatements. Again, there were none. Attached to that letter are the representations that have been made by management during the audit. These are the assertions that they've made to us through our audit procedures. A few financial highlights, again, we feel like this will be a little more useful to you than, than running through the actual financial statements themselves. We're gonna start out with your local funds, your general restricted revenue funds. You can see that cash over the past three years has fluctuated. This fluctuation is based on the net change in fund balance. Your total fund balance for the year ended June 30, 2015 decreased by $1.7 million. This decrease was due to, um, a decrease in certain grants and other revenues, such as IAL and E-rate funding totaling $900,000. In addition, there were also an increase in expenditures that were utilized as part of assigned fund balance in the previous year. Unassigned fund balance at year-end has steadily decreased to a total balance of $758,000. Again, as I previously pointed out, the net loss in the current year was $1.7 million compared to $431,000 in 2014 and $19,000 in 2013. Moving on to your state public school fund. In this fund, revenue always equals expenditures because it's a reimbursement-type fund from the Department of Public Instruction. Typically, this fund carries no assets or liabilities. You can see that revenues are up 4.7% in the current year compared to a decrease of 0.9% in the prior year. Additional revenues in the current year were used for instructional services, specifically salaries and teacher supplements. Your federal grants fund, again, this is a reimbursement-type fund, so revenues will equal expenditures. Your current year revenues decreased 11.3% compared to a decrease of 3.4% in the previous year. The biggest reason for this decrease was due to the expiration of the bulk of the Aura Race to the Top Funding. Your capital projects fund, you can see that cash has risen over the past several years from a low of $86,000 to $1.9 million, primarily due to the healthy county appropriations for capital outlay that you're receiving and the cost control exercised by the board. Revenues from the county for 2015 were $1.9 million in this fund compared to $1.1 million in 2014 and $1 million in 2013. I wanna point out that in 2013, the state issued Beaufort County Schools replacement school buses totaling $579,000. There have been no additional school bus replacements through fiscal year ended 2015. This next slide gives you a breakdown of your revenues by source for your local funds. You can see that the majority of your funding is from the state, followed by the county, and then the federal government. This year's state revenue was approximately $40 million. County was $14.5 million, and federal government was $5 million. Your expenditures for your local funds, um, as a, as a percentage of total, um, as consistent with most local education agencies, the majority of your expenditures are gonna be for instructional services. You can see over the past three years, Beaufort County Schools' instructional services have been about 75% of total expenditures. This next slide is gonna give you a visual presentation of your fund balance in your local funds. Again, I wanna point out that unassigned fund balance has decreased from $2 million to Additionally, $1 million has been appropriated, um, for next, or for the 15-16 budget. So if your budget comes in consistent with, or if your actual comes in consistent with your budget, you're looking at only $759,000 of available fund balance to appropriate for the 16-17 year. And again, for your fund balance, this is gonna give you an overall idea of the health of your fund balance. Most governments look at fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. In this case, your total fund balance is a little over one and a half times monthly expenditures, hovering right there around 13%. But your unassigned fund balance is... hovering right there around 13%, but your unassigned fund balance is below 5% of total expenditures, indicating that you, you have about three-fourths of a month of expenditures in reserves. It's gonna give you a snapshot of your food service fund. You can see through this graph that school food service has been pretty consistent over the past three years. You can also look at this graph in conjunction with this next slide, which is gonna give you a breakdown of the numbers. School food service cash has consistently been between $700 and $950,000. Also, revenues have been consistent around $3.5 million. And although food sales have dropped over the past three years as a result of decrease in participation, the federal government has picked up this drop to keep you even. This slide is gonna be the GASB 68 implementation that we discussed a little bit earlier. I'm not gonna get in too much detail because it's a lot of accounting literature. But what I do wanna say is this adoption of accounting principle was, took effect across all governmental units in the United States, so it's not just a state-mandated thing. And the state's actuary put these numbers together for us by governmental unit. And Beaufort County Schools' net pension liability as of the end of 2014, which caused the restatement, was $12.7 million total. At the end of 2015, that liability dropped to $3 million. So the difference in the liabilities is hung up right now on what we would call the balance sheet and be slowly amortized into pension expense over the next five years. This does not mean that you guys are going to have to assume this liability and will be liable to pay it out to the retirees, but they wanted a more accurate reflection of each governmental unit's proportionate share of the liability on their books. And then as far as our compliance audit is concerned, as a major federal program, we audited Title I, which was $2.1 million. 21st Century Community Learning Center, $227,000. Your Race to the Top programs, which should be expired after the end of 2015, $116,000. And we found no findings, material weaknesses, or significant deficiencies with those programs. Your ma, uh, your major state programs were the state public school fund, $37.9 million. In vocational education, state months of employment, which was $2.1 million. Again, no findings, material weaknesses, or significant deficiencies with these. Are there any questions?
I was just taking a few little notes. Anything anybody would like to say? I mean, wasn't too many surprises to me. I mean, the things such as the fund balance you were mentioning going down to $750, that's, we've already talked about that.
Sure.
And that's kinda what we were expecting, and as long as you did nothing clear out at you.
Well, I, I think a lot of people, or a lot of LEAs right now are just dealing with the decrease in participation, the school food service, with the new requirements that have been put on them. They're seeing that drop, and, and eventually, that's gonna come to a head. And whether or not the federal government keeps supplementing the losses that are resulting, you know, we'll see. You know, there's always the charter school issue that's out there that's kinda creating a unique dynamic between the legislature, local education agencies in themselves, and how that's gonna play out. I think the biggest thing for, for you guys is fund balance right now and making sure you're, you're stabilizing that and you're gonna have enough in reserves for any unforeseen circumstances. Capital outlays looking better, so you can start reinvesting into your infrastructure and buildings to be able to make sure those are being maintained.
Okay. I mean, I, I don't guess it's, it's your job to tell us on, should we, should we or should we not have fund balances? But you know, there's been a lot of discussions around.
It, it's not.
Schools not having fund balances at all.
Right, and, and we're, you know, careful to not give our opinion with something like that. We're here to present the results, but, you know, the fact of the matter, any business person knows that things come up.
You need a savings.
And you have to, you have to be able to pay for that sometimes, so.
Yes.
I'm not gonna tell you to carry it. I'm not gonna tell you not to carry it, but pointing out that, that it's dropped to $759,000.
And, and I knew you would, but, but you, but you're aware that that conversation's out there, so.
Yes.
But I, I'm in agreement with you. It's, it's just a smart thing to have some money on hand, but it is what it is, right? Dr. Phillips.
Statistically, where are other counties and LEAs stacking up when it comes to their fund balance? I mean, is there?
That's kind of a loaded question.
I'm not asking, yeah, I'm not asking you to pinpoint anybody, but I mean, are we way below the curve by dipping as low as we have? It's like Terry said, we're where there are some that don't have a fund balance at all, but that's, that's not our goal.
It really is, depends on the relationship between the county and the school system. I know some school systems and counties, for instance, it's kind of a use-it-or-lose-it thing. I believe Winston-Salem Forsyth County, if they don't still do it, they used to do it, where the county actually took back any unspent appropriations that were made. So they did not carry a fund balance, but at the same time, if something came up where you might have states not covering teacher assistant pay, they might come in and say, here's some additional money to get you through this period until we can figure out how this is gonna work going forward. You know, I'd really have to go back and, and put together some, some data to look at to tell you whether or not you're below the curve or, or kinda where you stand on that.
And, and how, how are we able to add to the fund balance? Is there anything that governs the amount that you can put into it in a school year, or?
Not to my knowledge. It, it's really cost control. So, you know, with, with the various funds, you have the option of moving teacher pay over to the state to try and utilize as much state funding as possible. So there's kinda the game that goes into that to be able to maximize, you know, what the state's gonna pick up for you, what the federal government's gonna pick up for you, so that you're really covering the bare minimum with your local funds. And so it's really just about cost control and how much you can, how much income you can keep in 15-16 to then go back into fund balance.
I know Ms. Harrell's been working really diligently to try to get us in the best possible shape when it, when it came to, we tried to, to keep teacher assistance for as long as possible. But the, I, I'm, I'm just wondering where we, where we kinda stack up against other counties, knowing that we're going into a highly-charged political year next year. You know, in the state of North Carolina, the rules that govern us can change overnight.
Yep. And, and I can, if you'd like, I can put together some information, send it over to Lynn, and she can distribute. You know, I can, I can only give you what I've seen and what I've worked on, obviously, but.
If you could do that without, yeah, you don't have to tell us what school system. I'm, I'm just curious. Are we way at the bottom, somewhere in the middle? Obviously, we're not at the top.
Four systems like our size.
Right, yeah, our size, yeah. Yeah, I'm not trying to compare us to Wake County or.
Sure, sure.
We probably would like to have their fund balance. If they have one, I mean.
Okay.
Okay, well, any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much.
Now, we do not need to act as a board to accept his findings, just, it was just information only. Okay, thank you very much. We have an Ag Expo presentation, I believe, coming up. That'll be Sarah.
I started watching it.
Oh, I didn't see one. Yeah, there is one here too. On YouTube.
Sorry. Just wanna take a couple of minutes now to update you on the Ag Expo. We had such a successful event this year. I know several of you were able to come. And also wanted us, so our listening audience at home will be able to get a little bit of an update. This year was our third year overall. First two years, as maybe you know, were in Northside just as the Beaufort County Ag Expo. With the support of people like Farm Bureau and a supportive internal team, we started to take a leap of faith, expand it to a seven-county event so we could benefit more students because we saw the benefit that our students were getting from the event. So we went forward, and thankfully, a Farm Bureau from Beaufort County has been with us since day one, and they set such a beautiful precedent. The other six counties that came on board this year, which are Vertie, Hyde, Martin, Pitt, Terrell, and Washington, each of their Farm bureaus joined up equally. And so we're very thankful to them because they're the reason we could continue this. Our premier sponsors this year were East Coast Equipment, BB&amp;T, Potash, Ag Carolina, and the cooperatives from Eastern, the Electric Cooperatives of Eastern Carolina, which was a three-county group. So, and they all stepped, they were all $1,500 or more sponsors. Not to mention the other sponsors, which were more than 50 sponsors that we had this year. And this is just a quick look at the whole group of sponsors. The, the great thing about this event, there's a place for all-size sponsors if they can get. We had a $30 check, which was our very first, our first donation this year, which was equally as exciting as a $500 because of the heart that was behind it. Just a few pictures while I'm going over some things. We gotta say a big thank you to Steve Griffin and Mac Hodges in a role with Farm Bureau, but especially to Dr. Phillips for his support because he's bought into this and helped us all to buy into it. So moving to the Ag Center was no small feat. It was actually very scary at times. But we have to give credit also to the staff of the Bob Martin Center, Durwood Taylor, the staff, the event manager there, or the facility manager. Without their help, they kept us from making a lot of mistakes we would've made just not knowing the facility. But from the minute we went and approached them, they've been a part of the team, and they kept us really in good shape, and we're so thankful to be team members with them now. This was a great opportunity to show off our FFA program, and we had, saw a lot of good blue and gold jackets that day. Our speakers were Mr. Larry Wooton, the president of North Carolina Farm Bureau, was one of our premier speakers, and it was so great for him to be able to see what his folks were behind, and we were able to tell him firsthand, thank you for how your folks at the local levels have been helping us. We have Steven and son Archie here, who are two of the most humble people in the world. They would really not like me doing this right now, but their dedication, and I see it in Archie's eyes. He, I, I can, I fully believe as long as we're able to keep this event up, Archie will be right there when his dad has to step out, if that day ever comes. This, this year, there are more than 50 sponsors, more than 70 exhibits, which is well over 25 more than we had had the year prior. We were able to increase the number and the types of exhibits that we had, which was great. Here we have Mr. Bob Bathory, the executive director of the Farm Service Agency, which he was, all the speakers fell right into what we wanted to do and set the precedent of having these young people soak up the opportunities. That's all that day. That's what we wanted them to do, and we really feel like the speakers helped do that. The day quickly became about relationships, and this was one of our Farm Bureau members from Beaufort County with some of the exhibitors. The relationships became within the Farm Bureau folks, the Farm Bureau folks from each of these counties getting to interact with our young people, with our staff members. Ag Carolina, we work with our FFA teams now to work on personal finance through the FFA program. Farm Service Agency has said, tell us what you need, whatever you need. We love what you're doing. They were so supportive. So we've made these relationships now, and a lot of our new and returning exhibitors were a big part of it. This was a great thing. We had state-level, regional, national-level people, all different types of opportunities that our students may not see. We got to see a lot of good media coverage as well. And this fire and rescue, that we branched a little bit away from agriculture, but it was all things related. So we're very thankful to all of our folks. But those relationships, again, with Ag Carolina at NASCAR Tech or Universal Technical Institute, they wanna work with our automotive shop at Northside to see how they can recruit students into their program. The John Deere University through East Carolin, East Coast Equipment, they wanna start working with us. So the relationships were just a whole nother part of this relate, this event that's really building. And I, we can see some big things coming for our students and our whole group, I mean, the whole area. Co-ops was another big addition this year. And we just, Cookie Man is one of the big favorites, Mr. Dan Weatherford from the Small Grain Growers Association. Favorite had a place smelling good. And I believe, and Dr. Phillips, and I believe in Mark Experis, this NASCAR tech car was probably the most popular thing in the place. You could see no one around the minute that car cranked up.
That's because it was the loudest thing to fly.
Well, that is part of it too. But seeing the way the students were responding and seeing the time that these exhibitors took, they were not making any money from it. They were there as, as an investment, and they were so grateful to the exhibitors as well. So wildlife was another, wildlife officers took a big part. Coming soon, the Northeast Ag Expo will have its own website, so it will not be intermingled too much with our schools, so people can get to it more readily. And we've got a little video we want to share with you. Some of you may see it, the Farm Bureau magazine did a coverage of the event and did a, just a super job. So we're gonna play that quick little video for you.
She was talking about FFA in the county and how we could enlarge the population of our students that study FFA, so we were looking at bringing all the FFA kids together for me in the county. And Archie recommended to have a, an Ag that, so we decided to bring them all together and let them intermingle with one another and learn about FFA personally. And the first year, I think we had 400 kids, and it was held at Northside High School. Really big hit. So the second year, we, we decided to do it again, and we had 600 kids. And we had teachers from surrounding counties to come in, and they saw it, and they were interested in it also. So this year, 2015, we found regional, we got a seven-county area that we pulled in from and we were happy with the Bob Martin Center with about 16,000 kids. Plus, last year, 2014, we had, we had 12 university and community colleges. So the kids could go from, from station to station and see what kinda agricultural education they can receive and earn higher degrees in high school.
Well, I think it's a fair to say, I wish we could do this all across the state of North Carolina. What a great partnership with the private sector, the farm bureau. Helping, we got, just talking with Steve is how you got it started. We're doing school now. What, about seven or eight counties now participate across the eastern North Carolina. But you got that, you got the public sector, but you got young people coming. And then we have to remember that's our farm club for the rest of us. They'll learn about agriculture, learn about the jobs that are there. There's a lot more jobs than just a job on that tractor, working in the field and such. And then this number of jobs, and people tend to forget that in North Carolina, agriculture's still the largest industry, not just those at farm, but all those people along in that chain, in the vegetation, food preparation, the food. All those things make a difference.
Oh, I think this means the world for these kids. I mean, this is an opportunity for children who haven't seen some of the, the things that these vendors, these exhibitors have out, to talk about opportunities. I just stood in front of a, a vendor who was sharing with students how just one bale of grain, how it can make 45 loaves of bread, and, and how that makes it down the line to the retail and the values of it. But we're looking at marketing, you know, we're looking at retail businesses. We're looking at farming at the, you know, right there on the field, transporting. There are so many career opportunities here today that students are gonna learn about. So I hope our students are gonna leave today. I hope at least one, but I hope more. But I know at least one is gonna leave here and say, Mom, Dad, I know what I'm gonna do.
And I've been here each year, and it's grown and grown every, every year. And it really gives our kids an opportunity to see what type of jobs there are available out there, how important the agriculture community is, and the, and the agricultural industry is to North Carolina and especially eastern North Carolina. Our communities continue to shrink here, but we have great opportunities to grow them through agriculture. through agriculture and the ancillary jobs that are associated with it.
Yes, it's been, a lot of work. We've got some good supporters helping us and some good people. We couldn't do it by ourselves, it's, it's a collaboration of a lot of people.
We've got a lot going on in North Carolina, you know, and we're a great state and people come here for a lot of reasons. They just don't know how much we do to provide food and Bible for the rest of the people. I, I talked with a farmer down in the northeast, grew something like four hundred acres of cabbage shipped all across the country, more and more of that's gonna happen. These kind of things with every young person, we don't know which one it'll trigger today, but I guarantee you someone will decide, I wanna, I wanna have a career in this agricultural sector. And we need them, we gotta have young people, and average age of the farmer in North Carolina and across the country, it's about fifty-seven to fifty-nine years depending where you are, we need young people.
Personally, I've been with the district about over twelve years now and I've never been any more proud of an event that we've been a part of. It's so great to work for a district that sees every child's next step is not gonna be a four-year college necessarily and we have to prepare them no matter what that step is. And I think this event is really be in the right direction to help do that. Thank you all for your support and any questions I can answer for you.
Great job.
Now, just thanks for all you do and everybody else because, like I said, it had to be a tremendous amount of effort that went in to put it together.
Saw a lot of yellow shirts walking around that day.
It was a good time. On November third next year, the date is already booked in market count.
What date was this?
November third.
November, okay, all right.
We're going, the week before Veterans Day this year.
Okay, moving up a little bit. At this time, I believe Dr. Philson's gonna give us a strategic plan update, that's something that's been worked on.
We, we have that, should be attached, if it's not, we'll get it to you so that you can have a, take a look at that. We convened three focus groups that were at our high school attendance areas. We've had a group of individuals that have met three different times coming together to try to cobble out some ideas that we could put on paper for our employees, for the board members, for the public to react to. And Sarah will have this up live tomorrow and we'll keep it out there through the Christmas break and then in early January, pull that feedback in and try to help us. It will give you a picture of what our vision and mission would be. There's an area for a motto and the person who's doing that for us stuck a motto inside quotation marks. We're really asking for some creative minds to think about what we do, what we're gonna be doing and something to reflect the geography of Eastern North Carolina perhaps in that motto. But you'll also see the strategic goals that we have and then the strategies that are there. And by no means is it, is it, is comprehensive, but it's not complete and we want to make sure that we have feedback from everyone. If there's something that we need to tweak, if we need to add something, if we need to take something out, if we've missed the marking in area, we just want that feedback and we want anyone in the community to provide that feedback. We want everyone in the community to feel like they've got a, a part in what we're trying to do moving forward. And we do hope that this is a comprehensive strategic plan that will guide and direct the work that we do at least through the next five years. So tomorrow, if you'll check out the website, if you have any difficulty with that, you can call us and we'll be glad to talk you through it or even send you a hard copy if you need that. But we'll have that on this website and then also for the public to have tomorrow. So it's, it's truly in draft form and it's the first step of getting it to the public that we want to work with.
Any questions, anybody? Okay, thanks. This ought to be interesting, a new board policy drones.
Yeah, we, this should be attached, I don't know if you don't have that, we'll, we'll get that to you.
No, no.
I was in a meeting two weeks ago and had two superintendents in the northeastern part of the state that have been addressing the drone issue. One of those counties has had some individuals who have flown drones over football games, which is maybe, maybe a problem. I see some value in the coaches doing that at some point in time. But because the price of drones are dropping, you know, and I've seen some that are under fifty dollars, I think after Christmas, we're gonna have a lot more that, that are gonna be around. And we don't have a policy right now, I'm not suggesting that we need to have one, but I think we need to think about it. And what I had asked Kim Edwards to do was to take a look at it. I'm also working with the School Boards Association and the FFA, I think, will probably come out with a little bit more guiding principles for us to follow, but wanted you to at least see what some of the other counties are doing. Again, we'll get that attachment there for you. It's there, if you refresh, you'll have a chance to see that. It came out of Camden, it actually came out of Edenton, Chawan, and Camden County, have both looked at that with a little bit of tweaks between the different iterations. And we may be looking at it again if you feel the need to do that early in the year, but just wanted to put this out there in your mind, again, not suggesting we do or don't need it, but I wanted you to be aware that this is something that we may need to look at.
Okay. Any questions about the drones?
Not yet.
Not yet. It's always something to come up.
What could, what could you see as an issue with it?
Well, we have to, you have to have a, a permission to be able to video or take pictures of our students.
Okay.
And just, just coming into the school to take pictures or do whatever, we just want to make sure that people, we know if, if someone's there doing that and they've got permission from us if we're gonna allow it at all. But I think there're gonna be some FFA regulations that are gonna override everything, including what, what our use would be.
FFA thing, some law was passed there.
And there, it's, it's budding and I'm sure we're gonna see more of that coming out in the next few weeks. But just, again, not, not trying to create a problem or an issue, just wanted you to be aware of it being something that we probably need to at least consider.
That's what we'll talk about ahead of time. Anything else? Okay, if not, we're gonna move into action items and Stan, I think you're up with some capital items you want us to look at.
There's so many things to click on, Stan, you'll have to tell us where you want us to click first. A lot of attachments.
You're gonna go through the items that you want to give us that we need to approve first and we can approve all of them at one time? I'm gonna keep running total here.
Like this, Lisa?
It's the last file.
Capital update. You wanna do the capital update first?
It's the last, the last file. It should be in order that I read as well as in there or not.
Your update that you sent today is the last file.
Okay, the very last one.
So we'll pull that one up.
The one I'm getting read, read from.
Okay.
Um, just to give y'all, enter some.
Not the spreadsheet, but the.
Right.
No, it's just the.
Where it says completed projects at the top.
Completed projects, then you can go back and look at the other files if you actually want to see, there's some of them that have some pictures. And the next one, but the capital updates, projects that have been completed, John Cotton Taylor's connecting roof, we came in sixty-eight dollars under budgeted amount. Capital, I mean, John Cotton Taylor main building roof, we came in twenty-seven hundred and sixty dollars under the budgeted amount. Completed roof replacement of building four at Eastern Elementary and we came in two hundred and seventy-six dollars on our budgeted amount. And we have completed and installed HVAC at EdTech and I did not have the number for that actual project, what we, we were under budget, but I did not.
But those are all items that were on our capital.
Yes, they were all items that were capitalized that y'all had previously approved.
Right.
All right, the next one is proj, projects in, currently in progress and I did put, Ms. Lisa, did you get a chance to attach the pictures? Okay. Washington Field House, masonry, masonry is finished, basic electrical rough end's finished, rafters are on and they were putting plywood on today. They hope to have it completely dried in by the end of the week with tar papers ready for the metal roof to be put on. PS Jones concession stand, there's a picture attached, it's somewhere in the ninety percent. The building's basically finished, they're doing rough end, doing painting, got a few little cosmetic things to do on it and then we, then we will be doing the outside grading and stuff. We have installed the water and the sewer, that was the school's responsibility to put in, that has been put in. We did that last week. And we have started on Eastern Elementary, multipurpose building, those that were there for the pre-construction, I mean, the groundbreaking on twelve nineteen, we had a great turnout of board members and county commissioners and everything. The site now has been demoed and they have actually started backfilling, they hauled in about seventy-some loads in the last two, that working days. They still have about four foot elevation on the fore end to go, it's really unbelievable to look at the grade stake from works out on one end to the ribbon of how much dirt's got to be hauled in there. Any questions about those? All going along very nicely and on time. Projects that we need approval on, that I'm asking for approval on, and I have them all listed here, is the Chalkwood Middle Schools softball field, fence.
And if everybody pull that up, it's got all the.
That's right, it's got the numbers, it's got everything on it.
Stan, are these projects that were originally on the list, you're just coming back for numbers?
Yes, sir, coming back for approval.
Are these people bidding on the same thing? I noticed the bid amount.
Yes, sir, I give them, I give them specs, poles, the whole nine yards, but they're, they're out there. Some of the contractors got a lot of overhead and the contractor that's on this, you're probably looking at the fence ones are the, the biggest difference.
Yeah, that was a huge.
The Clark and Son fence is a two man crew.
When I met them, it looked like they were all bidding on the same project, but the mounts were all up.
I actually wrote a spec list, poles, gauge of steel, gauge of mesh, gauge of top wire. We actually wrote a spec to it, so we would get apples, bid apples, but they, I reckon some of the other bigger companies have a lot more overhead, but um.
Don't we need to take out the Eastern Elementary stuff for right now?
We'll talk about that in a minute.
Yeah, we'll talk about it in a minute. The PS Jones four foot fence, that's a fence that's previously approved and that's to keep the people from, back, yes, sir?
The CMS fence.
Okay.
The one you're actually recommending is Clark and Son, is that what you were saying?
Clark and Son in the amount of two thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars plus the tax.
Gotcha, okay.
And we had five thousand dollars budgeted, so we're under budget. The PS Jones fence, there's actually two items there listed, we broke them up into two because we originally had planned to do them at separate times, but they're, they're still the same project. I'm recommending that we go with Clark and Son fence on the pond end for two thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars and the fence on the other end is four thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars plus tax. I mean, the total, excuse me. Fence on the pond end is two thousand, no, football field is two thousand one twenty-seven and the six foot fence on the pond end is two thousand one hundred and sixty-one, which brings a total project construction amount of four thousand two hundred and eighty-eight for Clark and Son and we had a budget of six thousand dollars, so we're under budget there. We're gonna skip over Eastern, skip over Eastern. South Side's cupola, repair of the final six cupolas that had the defect of boarding and stuff under the windows. It came in at Glass Tech, it's seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and we had a budget of thirty-six thousand.
Say it again, yeah, say, say that again.
My goodness.
What they plan on doing is reusing all the glass and everything and just replacing the wood when we did the first, after we completed the end of the ones last year, we found out the way they had originally done it and we could actually, all we have to do is replace the fiber, they put on, what is it, particle board, the real cheap stuff anyway, particle board underneath the windows and it's basically replacing it back with hardboard and putting a two inch piece of flashing and put our windows back in there. All the windows are fine, we inspected all the windows, so the only thing we basically be doing is taking them out, re-flashing and putting them back.
So did that original, what we budgeted include, replacing the windows?
Replacing glass and we, we did not find any defective windows up there, they're all in good shape. It's basically just the installation, they were put in poorly in, in the original construction. And that was for Glass Tech in amount of seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. PS Jones expansion joints, that's for five joints, is Protec Construction, I think they're at Raleigh, and six thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and we had a budgeted amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Freshman, where is that going? Where do they need expansion joints?
They're in the hallways where the connecting hallways join the building, there was not any originally put in and the floor keeps cracking there. If you lock it on the back hall, there's probably an inch and a half, two inch gap where the VCT has fell in and we keep.
Yeah, I've seen that happen, I know why that happens, but was that, did Wimco build PS Jones?
I don't know who built it. Anyway, it was poor construction originally, the school right across the street has them in it.
Well, that's what I was sort of saying, we walked those, some of them had them in and then you would get one that didn't have it in.
PS Jones didn't have any.
It made no sense.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand.
And they were on the plans, they just, no construction management, it didn't get put in.
So they were on the original plans and were they paid for as if they were put in?
Pretty sure they were paid for.
Is there no, is there no recourse?
Not this, not this far out.
Okay.
All right. That is what I have, I need approval and we're gonna talk about Eastern.
Okay, so we're gonna skip over Eastern for now.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the ones that we're looking to approve, just to refresh everybody's memory, is the CMS fence Clark and Son, PS Jones Clark and Son, two projects, South Side Glass Tech, the, what you just explained under the budget, and PS Jones, the expansion joints.
Four items, yes, sir.
Those are items we need approval. Any questions about any of those?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion further? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, all of those are, are approved, Stan. Now, explain to us Eastern.
Can I talk with you a little bit about what, what we're dealing with there? You all may recall that when we went through the capital budget planning and coming to you all with projects, one of those was to enclose the bathroom pod so that students would be able to go in and out of that building and, and not have to go through the elements and whatnot. We had a price tag of sixty-two thousand dollars on that and then another twenty thousand dollars set aside for the heating and air conditioning, condition that building. So there was a total of eighty-two thousand dollars if you add those two together. The commissioners, we found out when we did the ground breaking, had a conversation with them after it was over with, they had earmarked allocated three hundred thousand dollars in the current year's capital to be used specifically for the enclosure, but they wanted more than just that bathroom pod enclosed, they wanted the two pods that go to that bathroom pod, so it really would be shaped like a U. So if you come out of one of the pods, you're in an enclosed area, storefront kind of an area, and you could go into the bathroom. We don't think with the numbers that Stan has, it's gonna cost three hundred thousand dollars to do that, but because that money was earmarked for that purpose specifically, what we wanted to do was to present to you tonight a plan that would put on hold a couple of projects that we have to make sure that we're holding in reserve the full three hundred thousand dollar amount. And then once we get the projects done at Eastern, then we can come back and we can say, we were on budget, we don't have any more money, or we came in under budget, we've got this amount of money to spend and then we could start doing those projects again. So not taking anything off permanently, but putting some things on hold until we could get this project finished. And we've been fortunate because we've had a very mild season and what we'd like to do is to have something taken care of as quickly as we can, hopefully by the time students come back from the Christmas break, at least to have that, that area in front of the bathroom closed off. And it would be a storefront with, Stan can explain that to you, but you're basically talking about some light structure and then some type of a, an enclosure. And it's, it's gonna create heat, it's gonna sweat, we gotta deal with all of that in terms of the environmental controls. And you're also closing in a courtyard area, so we've gotta make sure that the drainage is not gonna become a problem right now. So what we're looking at is, is asking to put on hold enough projects, really we need two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, because if you add the sixty-two and the twenty, that gets us to eighty-two, so we need two hundred and eighteen thousand. And then we'll come back to you after we get that done to let you know how much we had left over or what the situation is in terms of the overall dollar amount.
Right, because as, as the bids start coming back in, we're anticipating nowhere probably near the two hundred and eighteen thousand, but we don't actually know till the bids start coming back in.
Trying, just rough numbers, Friday and today, I come in like one hundred and five thousand total projects.
Yeah, shouldn't be.
Is what, you know, rough numbers and that was calling air conditioning folks and doing square footage, calling in some grading folks to see what we had to do, because we had a tree in there, a rock good sized tree that's probably going to come out because it's gonna cause a lot of drain problems. If we enclose that courtyard and we have a two inch rain, we've got to increase the storm drain size so we can handle the water that would fall on that amount of ground inside that building. And then we have an issue with the grade going up into the one hundred building on both sides, there's a rock good elevation and it's just a little prefab, little concrete wall that was put in by plant operations and that would have to be torn out in a new footer poured to, to, you know, hold the weight of it. And then we have some issues with concrete, none of the concrete matches up between the three buildings. So when we're doing what we originally planned, it's all on grade, but then when we get these other two buildings, we got different grades of concrete. So we're gonna have to tear out some or pour some over some if we got, you know, three inches or greater, but there's gonna have to be some issues there with that, that's gonna increase the project a little bit, so.
But what I'd asked Stan to do was to go ahead and take care of that pod where the bathroom is so that when students come back in January, we've at least got that covered and then we can do the work to stretch it out to the other two pods.
They're working on that, it's a little lead on glass, but they're gonna try to make it happen, they're, they're pushing, they're installers. But if you want me to go over the four projects I was gonna hold?
Yeah.
I recommend that we hold the server room, the additional server room at plant operations, the new access road at CMS.
How much, what were the amounts we had attached?
That's forty-five thousand for the additional servers room, the new access road at Chalkwood Vanity was fifty-seven thousand nine seventy-six, the pneumatic valves at Washington High School of ninety-eight thousand and the new modified driveway at Northeast Elementary of forty-eight five brings a total of two forty-nine, four seventy-six.
Well, that's greater than what we need.
Right. Right, and our current project, we were talking earlier, bathroom enclosure was sixty-two. We actually had twenty thousand for renovation of the bathroom. And then we had asked for twelve thousand in HVAC, which got put into non-barred file. So we really have ninety-four thousand dollars sitting there for construction of those bathrooms that we have currently in the capital that's sitting there allocated for Eastern, so.
So from what you're just, like you said, just kind of putting together, we're probably looking at maybe between thirty and forty thousand more to finish it.
Yes.
Which is really just one of those projects, not to mention so many of the projects that came in under. Through piecemeal, we may still be able to get everything done.
Yes, ma'am, and I'm pushing hard to get this one done. Mister, can't think of his name now, from DPI is coming next week to look at the site, to give us their information. Not Mr. John Tucker, it's another gentleman that Mr. Tucker is a structural engineer with DPI. Just wanna come and see, give us his input, the way we think we need to handle it, and to look at that building foundation issue we have in building one with the door frames. He's gonna come look at that.
Now, we had, we had said hold off on the Eastern Elementary stuff, but the last two things don't have anything to do with that enclosure.
Right, yes, ma'am, I actually need approval.
Don't you need that approval?
I do need those, I need everything at Eastern approved. Well, excuse me, I've got two at Eastern, there was really one I left, or two I left off there.
The last two are about.
The last two, I had Eastern on all of them, but um, being we're talking about bathrooms, I need approval on Eastern Elementary outside wall enclosure from AAA glass here in Washington of twenty-thousand one-hundred and twenty. That will take care of what we had originally decided to do from bathroom to bathroom with doors on the ends.
And when you tie that into what is gonna finish it off?
When we do it, we just have to take those doors out.
Okay.
We'll have a waste of those doors, or we possibly can move them and put them on the outside, you know, if we can work it in our construction and not, just reuse them in the same site.
And that'd get us, that'd get us to first part, and we really need to go ahead and do it.
That's phase one, per se, of a two-phase project. And then also, I need the bathroom HVAC, that's heating and air conditioning for Advanced Air Solutions, an amount of fourteen thousand eight-hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-one cent.
And all of these are items that we already budgeted for?
All budgeted for, yes, sir, it's coming out of that ninety, or eighty-two, or ninety-two thousand, whatever we're looking at there.
How is the additional work gonna affect this? I mean, especially what HVAC?
What we're looking at, Ms. Butch, is putting in those new split units where you have multi-units off the same compressor. So we're gonna put one in that pod, our original bathroom enclosure, there'll be one compressor on the outside, there'll be two air handlers, little wall package air handler on the wall, and then one in the hall that we can sit this side, and it'll be the same on it. So we probably look at that, do an additional, two units more to help handle those glass disclosures. Those two enclosures in the future, and the ones that we're talking about trying to get done, it's gonna take a whole lot more air conditioning, because they're the ones that catch the morning sun and afternoon sun, they're the ones that's really gonna get the heat load. Especially the morning, when the morning ones gonna have it to two o'clock in the summer, it's gonna really, really be a smoker on the glass. Lot of heat, but I'm asking for those two to be approved so I can pull the trigger on them.
And the last two things, are those things we had budgeted?
They're related to the new building.
Right, but have we budgeted those?
No, ma'am, they're not budgeted.
Let's do the ones that are budgeted then. Let's go ahead and go back to the bathrooms, which will get us through phase, I'm gonna call it phase one myself.
That's the, it's phase.
That's the original plan that we had.
Right.
And those were budgeted items that were well under budget, so we need to go ahead and get those approved first, if that's the pleasure of the board to do that.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, on first part of the bathrooms, go ahead and get those closed up, and.
And everything else that's above it, right?
Right, and then we'll come back with, after that's getting in, because after that's just walls, really.
Yes, sir, glass walls and HVAC.
Right, mm-hmm. Okay, so all in favor of, let's call it phase one, those numbers there, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, and by the time you get to, when we get back in here together is January, we'll have a little bit more information on the next part, and we're not gonna need all that money that you're setting aside at all. But since we do capital over twelve months anyway, it's not really holding up a project.
No, sir, it's not.
It's just projects that are in the future, and we'll see how they actually go.
The ones basically that are holding up on is the weather's gonna affect them this time of year, they won't, will not be able to be done to spring, because of this general situation at the schools and.
And the road at Chalkwood Middle has been a two-year project on hold anyway, so it's not holding up anything there. But now, that carries us to the Eastern building part.
Right, these were additional, non.
It's what we approved, just did all the other stuff as well?
No, we already approved those, we already approved the fence and the area.
Okay.
Everything except for bottom two.
That's it, everything now, but the Eastern multipurpose building.
They're non-budgeted, non-items, asking for, asking for this money, we gotta have it, it was in the contract to be supplied by owners.
Right.
Or to be done by owners, so we have to contract it out.
Not to exceed twenty-five hundred and not to exceed eighty-six with Tier Con.
I'm making motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion about that? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, you got twenty-eight thousand from the under-budget item on the, at the south side. So we're still good, I'm trying to keep a mental picture going in my head here, but anything else you need to show us there?
We just need to make sure in the future, when we, when we do building projects like this, to budget that stuff in.
Yep.
That's a given, that we've got to pay for that.
Right, they need to all be included.
Any other questions?
No, when we come back in January, we're gonna try to schedule, I know, what do we call it, Don, a retreat in January or sometime? Yeah, I want to come back with the full original capital list. Lisa, you know which one I'm talking about? Yeah, just getting to update that and bring it back to all of us, and that way we know everything that's in there that's been done and hasn't, as far as.
We're keeping it up.
We'll see a whole picture of it at one time.
Right, man, this Lisa's been keeping up with it, it's ready to do.
Is that the one, that's one of these mini attachments here?
Yeah.
Yeah, second to the last one, I think.
Yeah, we updated it, and it's.
Okay.
We're keeping up both of them.
Good job, I have no questions, if anybody else has it.
Merry Christmas to you.
Okay, that carries us to needing to go into closed session?
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General.
Can I stop you one second?
Take it back.
Well, they keep, they've moved this around, I thought it was going to the very last. No, it, that's.
It is on your, it's not.
It is on mine, yeah, we have different agendas here on the screen.
So much going on.
So which one is the, didn't we move it to? Okay, yes, you make, I'm sorry about that.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, I'm gonna try again. I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one-four-three dash three-one-eight dot eleven, A-one to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute one-one-five C dash three-twenty-one.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, go into closed session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in closed session. We're back into open session, and if I open up my agenda, I don't know what I'm doing. First order of business is to approve the personnel agenda dated today's date that we just had a look at.
Someone's chair. Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, personnel agenda is approved. Now, that brings us to board elections, and I think Don's got some information from Mac, so I'm gonna back out of this.
Mac has been in Green Bay traveling, he's called earlier today and said he may have a hard time getting back. I asked him if he wanted us to move forward, and we were trying to give some time for him to get here, and he said he didn't want to hold up the elections and for you all to move forward. So if you're okay with that. We are at the point, this time of the year, we need to elect a chairperson, and then that chairperson will take the responsibility of getting the vice chair in place. But what I'd like to do is entertain any nominations that you have from the floor for a person to serve the upcoming year as our board chair.
I nominate Terry Williams.
I second that. Terry Williams.
And I want to thank Terry for the wonderful job that he has done.
That's the reason we're nominating him.
That's right.
There's, there's no rebate in Pacey, you don't have to do that.
Any other nominations?
Make a motion, nomination cease?
I second that.
All in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All in favor of Terry serving again for the upcoming year as the chair, please raise your hand. All in favor.
I ran so to catch myself. I, I thank you, I think I thank you. I'm not sure, maybe somebody else wanted to do it.
No, we thank you.
Whatever, so now we need a vice chair? So I would like to open up the floor for nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Carolyn Walker.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Thank you, you sure you don't want to think about it?
Okay, any others?
Move nominations closed.
Okay, we got that, so one of you want to be, well, I don't think you actually need a second on it, but. All in favor of closing nominations, say aye. Did everybody say aye? Okay, that leaves us with just Carolyn Walker then. All in favor of Carolyn Walker as your vice chairman, raise your hand.
Thank you.
There you go again.
Been pretty easy to sit beside you.
No, I'll, I'll agree, y'all have done an excellent job this year, especially my first year being on, it's been the most part and a pleasure.
Thank you.
No, it has been a pleasure the whole time.
This is a group effort, trust me, and this board.
We get to stay in our same seats, right?
As far as I'm concerned, unless somebody wants to change your seat.
Does that mean I have to sit beside Mac again this year?
Well, y'all seem to enjoy that, you seem to enjoy that. That carries us to a January calendar, and Don, I think that's you.
We have the eleventh and the twenty-fifth as our work session, on the eleventh, our twenty-fifth is a regular January board meeting. I would like to do a retreat with you and just get things set up for what we're gonna be talking about in the winter and spring with regard to budget. And we had sent out two dates to look at January the sixth or the seventh, we don't need both. And what I'd like to do is possibly meet from like one o'clock till four o'clock to take care of the retreat. So the Wednesday, the sixth, or Thursday, the seventh, one of those work better than the other.
Sixth will work for me, I have a medical procedure.
Will you be okay for the seventh?
The seventh on the third?
I suspect so.
And what time, one to four?
Can we do one to four?
Okay.
Seventh's a Wednesday or Thursday.
That'll be Thursday, the seventh, from one to four, yeah, okay.
Is everybody speaking up saying that's okay?
Seventh is good.
The seventh of January, which is the Thursday, we would do one to four that day for the retreat.
One o'clock to four.
EdTech?
Yes.
Okay, would I be overstepping my bounds if I told all the members that anything that they want to bring up for discussion that day, you need to contact Lisa and have it put on the agenda? I guess everything is fair game, I mean, and you know, everything can be qualified, but if you have, if you have some, I know, that's what I said, not be qualified. But if you have something that you want to discuss, that'd be a good time to do it, so just let Lisa know that it can go on the agenda. Or forever hold your peace.
One to four.
One to four on the seventh. And we'll be, yeah, so that'll be our next meeting then, won't it?
We got one on the early.
Well, I got one earlier than that, but I mean, I think.
That'll be before our regular board meeting on the eleventh.
That'll be the next meeting we have as a group, right, okay, there's one on the fifth. Board member updates, anything anybody'd like to share with us?
I want to congratulate Southside High School for going to the playoffs. I'm sorry that they were not at the state championship, because I do feel like they could have won. But congratulations to the students and the staff and the community.
And I'll just say, he's not here, but thank Dr. Holloman for coming in today, that was a nice touch.
Appreciate it.
And a pleasant surprise.
I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Same to you.
Okay, superintendent updates?
Couple things I want to share with you. We had a question about teacher supplements with the one-hundred dollar increase that came from the generosity of the county commissioners. And we haven't changed anything, we've always paid those supplements in December and at the end of the year. And what we're gonna do is take half of that one-hundred dollar increase and give it to them in December, along with what they normally were getting for their supplement, and then we'll give it the other part at the end of the year, so that'll happen in December. School offices and schools will be closed after the eighteenth of December. For the public, that was an early release day, but we made that a full day because of some inclement weather and makeup that we had. And then we'll be open again on January the fourth, I want you to be aware of that. And Mark and I are working with Blue Cross Blue Shield and a couple of folks in Raleigh. We've got an issue that's going on that impacts about a hundred and fifty of our employees. And when you go through to sign up for a couple of the different types of insurance coverage this year, you had to go through and do a tobacco at a state, you had to say that you weren't a tobacco user, I can't get the word out. Also had to indicate who your primary care provider was, and you had to go through a health assessment. And we've got some of our employees who didn't get all of that done. And some may not have just, may not have just not done it. Others, I know, including myself, went through the website three different times, and I finally got it to work. We've had some problems with the website, so we're gonna be meeting, we've been told to be on call on Wednesday to go to Raleigh to meet with the folks from Blue Cross Blue Shield. I talked with a neighbor in county, they have five hundred employees that are impacted, so across the state, there's surely multiple thousands of employees. The concern is that there's not, there's a credit that you get for each of those, and if you don't get that credit, you have to pay more each month for your health insurance. The health assessment piece, they were backlog, so we knew that they were gonna work on some of that, but there's some other issues that we want to have resolved, and we're gonna ask for a couple of forms of relief, and I don't know what we're gonna get, but rather than just sitting back and not allowing anything to be done for our employees, we wanted to pick up the calls and see what we could do, so we're gonna be working on that. And then just something else for the board to be aware of, I don't know where this stands right now across the state, but NCAE and PENC donation, or not donations, but membership dues may not be able to be taken out of checks anymore with withholdings because of some requests that have been made at the state level that those organizations have not done yet, so if you get phone calls, that's something that's happened at the state level and not us, but it could impact some of our employees with regard to some of those membership dues and things that they have taken out of their check. So just be aware.
The state bonus, has that already been paid out?
State bonus was dictated to us when it was paid, it was paid in early December, that has been done, that was seven-hundred fifty for all of our employees.
So our employees should be getting their, their check, their bonus, and their supplement this month, so.
That'll come in their December check, or it came in their November?
It already, the bonus was.
The bonus has already been paid, I understand.
As a separate check.
That's right.
They should have received it December the seventh.
Last week, yeah.
But their other, the supplement comes with their regular check.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, anything anybody else has to say? If not?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. We're adjourned.